We're good?
Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Planning and zoning historic commission of Thursday, November 2nd, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Franco?
You call the roll.
Chair Brunner?
Here.
Commissioner Reyes-Brauer?
Here.
Commissioner Myers is absent. Commissioner Feck?
Here.
Commissioner Kruger?
Here.
Commissioner Stanek?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Okay, having quorum, we can move on to the remainder of our agenda. So, the first order of business is approval of minutes. We have three minutes to approve from the first July 24th meeting, second from the August 14th meeting, and third from the September 18th meeting. Could I have a motion to approve minutes as provided in the packet?
I'll make a motion that we approve the July 24th, 2023 minutes, the August 14th, 2023 minutes, and the September 18th, 2023 minutes.
Okay, are there any?
Oh, six minutes.
Are there any corrections, updates, or anything, any discussion on the minutes that anyone would like to have or make?
No.
Okay.
Brunner?
Yes.
Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stanek?
Yes.
And Scarpelli?
Yes.
Okay, with approval of minutes done, we are moving now on to public comment. Does anyone in the audience have something they would like to say in regards to our agenda or non-agenda items?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Give it a little lax.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. If you could say your name.
My name's Barb. I'm a striker.
Okay, fantastic.
I'm the manager at Royals Gaming Cafe.
Okay.
In East Dundee.
And the address of that?
505 Dundee Avenue.
Okay. Fantastic.
My public comment is, we're connected to the restaurant, we're connecting building. Got the name of the restaurant. Love Marcico, saying that right? Kitchen, it's Mexican restaurant. They want to have live bands, which I'm all for, live music, my whole family is in bands. But them having live bands is affecting our customers and our business. Pictures are falling down, glasses breaking. We go over there to ask kindly, can't go over there anymore. Some of the employees, I get harassed, get name-calling. I do have no trespassing on one of them, so we can't even work together on this. But if they sound deadening, I'm afraid they're going to use all that money, and it's still not going to work because the building's so old and thin. The jukebox is outrageously loud sometimes. I just don't know what to do. I mean, we can move. If someone likes to pay my lease, then we can go somewhere else, but it's affecting business. On top of that, Friday night, I had an employee quit because of the live music.
Okay.
So, it's continually happening.
So...
I don't want to have to call the police. It's unnecessary drama. So, I don't know what to do.
So...
So, I'm asking you guys to, maybe they can sound deadening if they want, or it's not a sport bar.
Okay, so you're talking, so this, the restaurant I'm talking about is our number four hearing?
Correct.
Yes, so, yes.
I don't know if you've ever been there. I mean, we're literally connected.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, so, so what I need to, yes, there can't be a rebuttal at this point.
Right.
We're going to have a public hearing on this topic. It would be fantastic if you could speak again in the public hearing.
Sure.
Which is tonight.
Oh, it's not, sure.
It's going to be, it's the fourth one in our agenda.
Okay.
And then, this will be on record as a public hearing, facts on this case. They'll be able to talk about their application, you'll be able to talk about your thoughts at that point.
Sure.
We can have statements then.
Okay.
Okay, cool, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Yes, Jamie? I mean, if you could come up to the microphone.
I tried to download the special use permit or application. I can't find it on your website.
Okay, so...
And then, I went, I went to the email that you sent me, clicked on that link, it says it's not found.
Oh, I'll email it.
Even though it says updated.
Yeah.
It says updated, but it never came up.
It must be an error, but it's up there.
Okay.
And I'll send it to you, and then, you could either call me, and I'll guide you on the website on how to do it over the phone, or you could email me, and I'll send it to you.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other comments? Great. Okay, so then, moving on to the next item, or next set of items in our agenda for tonight, which will be the public hearings. We'll have four separate hearings on, for four businesses. And they're all going to be the same type of hearing, so just, these will be the first grantings of our new special use for live entertainment. And kind of the idea behind these is to, you know, we recognize, the board recognizes that by having live music, there is additional responsibilities and challenges that a business needs to take on for both the safety, the noise you may generate. So, we want to put it under our special use process to have this tighter partnership between the village and our businesses, and respect also the wishes of our residents. So, that's what we're going to be going through here today. We'd like to hear your thoughts on your, your plans, how you want to manage your noise, safety, things like that. Should be fairly, I think, straightforward in that sense. With that being said, the first item of business, the owner is not here, there is no one here right now from 325 Meyer, correct? Yeah, could I have the, yes.
Chairman Brunner, I would like to make a motion that we amend tonight's agenda and move new business item number one to the end of new business after item number four.
I have a motion, could I have a second?
A second.
Brunner?
Yes.
Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Stanek?
Yes.
So, then, may I have a motion to open the public hearing for our item number two, a special request, a request for a special use to allow for a restaurant with live entertainment as described in section 157050 F1D2 of the zoning ordinance located at 311 Barrington Ave., East Dundee IL 60118 in the B1 Downtown Business District.
So moved.
Brunner?
Yes.
Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stanek?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Okay, with that, the public hearing for this property is now open. Did we receive any email or calls in regards to this property?
No.
Okay. So, then, next, is there someone from this property who would like to describe their plans for live entertainment at DC Cobs? Ah, the gentleman with the DC Cobs.
Mr. Chairman, we were going to need a name and for the witness to be sworn in.
Yes.
Yes.
Sir, yes.
If you mind raising your right hand and stating your name, and go ahead. Go ahead.
Anything else? Okay, sorry. Julius White?
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth, and the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yes, so, within the space at the Dundee location of Cobs, on Friday and Saturday evenings, we have DJs in the space. They have an on-time of 10:00 PM, they run until 1:30 PM. At this time, we're not doing any additional live acts throughout the week or any other timeline. That's what we got, those three and a half hours each Friday and Saturday evening.
Okay, so, you have a specific place designated, correct, for, for this, and it's always in the same place?
Correct, yes. The audio hookups are just in front of the rest of the hall inside the main space.
So, Chris, have we ever done any type of view into these places where they have their entertainment?
Have we done one?
So, like, have we gone in and looked to make sure that where they set up live music, that it meets our building or fire codes in terms of?
Mark from the fire district can, can address that?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to get sworn in.
Actually, we should, actually, what we should do, if we, we're going to swear all the witnesses that might talk tonight.
Yeah.
Can we just do it all at the same time?
Sure. Okay, so, how would you like to do that?
Have them each state their name, and then swear them all in.
Okay, so, what I'll do is Mark, Chris, and then Josh?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mark, say, raise your right hand and state your name.
Mark Petrowkey from the Marshall County Fire District.
Chris Renary. Building Inspector, East Dundee.
Josh Bordeis, acting chief of police, East Dundee.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. All of you, true. You too.
I do.
Just for the record.
Great. Everybody's been sworn.
Go ahead, Mark.
So, to date, the fire district has received one civilian complaint on DC Cobs. We addressed it with the owners. We had an occupancy issue with the space. Mr. Renary and I, self, have been having discussions back and forth about the use. The occupancy load is designed by the architect, we've actually recently found some errors in their numbers. They did state that they're going to be doing a ticker at the door for headcounts going in and out. That was good for a while, I can't guarantee that you're still doing it. There's online information that you're able to assess, we have Snapchat, Facebook, people posting things on social media, and I've got some videos, they've been crowded as of lately. I personally, on my own time, was in the downtown area a few weeks ago, and when DC Cobs let out, it was like the Cubs won the World Series, and they are such a...
Yes.
So, occupancy is the fire district's biggest concern at this time, especially the civilian complaint came from a public official.
Right.
That is one of our big concerns that we need to work on if they are allowed to move forward.
Yeah.
That's, that's major.
Yeah, so, we don't do anything special as a village to, like, approve music areas from a building perspective?
Yeah, we have not done anything special.
Okay.
From the building department to deal with, with music being played at establishments.
So, it'd be like temporary stages or things like that, there's nothing that, that we?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you. But yeah, I think this is an example of, you know, what, what music can bring to a business. If you were just a restaurant, you probably wouldn't be having occupancy, you know, capacity issues, right?
For this location in particular, if we were just a restaurant, we would not be able to sustain.
Yeah.
The late night is a large portion of the revenue driver for this location, and without it, the business would be greatly compromised. In speaking to Mark about the capacity, we have re-implemented clickers at your request and the communication that was given to you, but in addition to that, we also now, Friday, Saturday evenings, do run a cover. That means that every single person that comes through the door pays $5 either cash or credit. Now, I have headcounts, and I know what those bottom-line numbers are. Quick math says we are never near the 352 occupancy load that we are allotted per the list.
Okay, can I address that?
Yeah, please.
The occupancy load, yeah, that the architect put on the plans was 352, but that was incorrect. When you look at his math, I don't know how he screwed it up, but it's actually around 152 when you do the math, on the first floor. And then, there's another, I think, 67 for the second floor.
Okay, so, we'll have...
And that, that's with seating, tables and chairs. Now, when they do this nightclub situation, they, you move tables and chairs?
Yes.
Yes, so, there may be a little fudging on the numbers that you can maybe get more, because now you're, the occupancy load per square foot goes from 15, not 15 per square foot, but it goes in, it doubles basically, so you can get seven people in the same area
as opposed to the 15 with tables.
Yeah, just piggybacking, Mr. Renary, how if anybody's educated on occupancy classifications or loads, it's a mathematical equation based off the use. So, a restaurant style of use gives you one equation versus clearly making it
Yeah.
A dance floor gives you another equation, but we, actually, after this incident, we did find the architectural drawings, and we looked at the math, and it's, it's way off back in the day, so...
Could that, could that mathem, or could the mathematical, I've spent 30 years in commercial property management, so I'm familiar with the, the different types of calculations. So, if they removed all the tables and chairs, and it was considered standing molly, would that then allow for that 300-person load? But then, the question I would have is, is there enough exiting capacity out of the building to handle that 300-person load?
Currently, yes, there is, if it's not blocked. That was another issue we had during this civilian complaint, that's why I got to the point, because the tables and chairs were being moved and blocking Egress doors to where only you can get out the main exit and the back.
Okay.
We addressed it with them, they've since fixed that problem, it was an educational experience, but I'm just, it's probably re-classifying the occupancy, from a main to restaurant to a different assembly.
Sure.
I don't know if we can legally do that, I guess. That's where it comes...
I don't know if a building can have two different occupancy...
Exactly, that's where it comes to, okay, how are we going to handle the situation?
Yeah, okay. So, it sounds complicated.
Yeah, certainly, it seems so. I would just say that this is the first time I ever heard of any architectural counts drawings being inaccurate. So, that is news to I, and I would assume, as Commissioner Scarpelli mentioned, that it was to create that maximum load, knowing our business model, and this is what we do at all locations. On the main floor, I believe that was right about when you started, maybe a year or plus ago. We were at one point moving a table in front of one of the three, one of the four main floor entrances to keep guests from exiting that door, so no one ran out that door with beverages, because at the time, I didn't have the professional security team that I have now to make sure that no one is running out into the street with open alcohol. Since then, we have brought on the security team to help secure and ensure the safety of all of our guests along with the rest of the community.
Yeah.
And they now are able to be stationed at each of those appropriate spaces, so there are four exits on the main floor available to patrons at all times.
Yeah. Okay. Does, does anyone else have questions along this line, before we talk, I guess, a little bit about the, you know, the noise, specific ankle as well?
No.
Okay, so, do we have any reports on, like, noise violations here?
I do know, I don't know if it's...
Yeah.
You can sit there.
Stay there, okay.
So, in the last three years, we've found six reports of noise complaints.
Okay, is it, is it, have there been any recently?
The most recent, pull it up.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Nothing within the last few months.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I know there was some, there was some early on, there was a bunch.
Initially, yeah.
Yeah, and you guys, I know, made some changes.
Because even the tenants above us was some of the, you know, where there was communication maybe gapped between this business is coming and people living above us, but we've since assessed that and made the appropriate volume adjustments. Every single evening, the ordinance, we cut our outdoor playing speakers two hours prior to our pros. We make necessary adjustments so that there is no external noise, I believe it's 50
Yeah.
From the exterior part of the business. You know, again, we are, we have been and will continue to work within whatever framework that we can reasonably do to both sustain our business and also keep the community happy.
Yeah, fantastic. So, any other questions by commissioners?
What was that, capacity? What was the capacity, three?
The restaurant capacity? Thought it was like 150.
The only thing we have that lists capacity is 352.
Yeah.
350, you say?
That's, yeah, that's what they have listed. Our village and fire marshal believe that their calculations might be wrong, but this is an ongoing situation. There's no resolution to that discrepancy. It's my understanding, at least, from what was presented.
Yeah, I was just, we recently found a plane, we're going to turn around, we don't know how we're going to approach you with it in the next week or two, but we just found a plane, we want to make sure the numbers are right, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just want to make sure the count of the way it's coming.
So...
I have a question on, on the noise. So, since the village changed the ordinance, and we no longer use a decibel meter, how, if a neighbor or the general public has an issue with the noise, how are, how is your staff going to know when something is too loud? Too loud or too much bass?
We try to work with the business, to be frank. We'll go in and talk to them and say, hey, we've had this complaint, will you please turn down the music? And, and to DC Cobs' credit, whenever we have that issue, they can, I mean, they comply with us, right? So, yeah.
I have a question. What time do these reports come in? Is it late at night when people are sleeping, or is it just when they've opened?
It's mostly at nighttime, yes, yeah.
Okay, if no, there are no more questions, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
A second.
Brunner?
Yes.
Reyes-Brauer?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Closing the public hearing. Yeah, I didn't even notice.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't even notice either.
Sorry.
Would you like to close the public meeting? Yes or no?
Yes.
Stanek?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you. You, yeah, we're not going to ask you any more questions. You can sit down if you'd like. So, the, so, in this, with this one, I think, you know, we see some of the challenges with some noise complaints in the past. Obviously, some challenges with the capacity due to having live entertainment, which clearly makes them function different than just a restaurant without things. So, I, I think, you know, the, it's very appropriate to be issuing a special use for something like this. Personally, you know, we have no, we have no guidance on, you know, restrictions to put on the special use, but I feel that I would be very comfortable with adding, you know, the, must stay in compliance with our noise ordinance, and must stay in compliance with our business and occupancy codes as the minimal conditions for these special uses.
If I could add, at the August 14th meeting, the PCHC crafted three bullet points, and it would be conformed to, the first one would be conformed to section 93 dot 11, section D of the Village Code, unless granted approval from the Village Administrator or Village Board for permission to end at midnight on Friday and Saturday, no more than one time per month per establishment. The second bullet point was no more than three noise ordinance citations within a 12-month period per establishment. And the last one, the PCHC crafted at that meeting, was conformed to fire and building code standards.
So...
Sure.
Yeah, so, this was, that was during our discussion post-meeting, right?
That was part of the live entertainment discussion.
Okay, cool. And this is your, now, your template?
That's, that's a template that I could use on each live entertainment special use, in addition to any other conditions that this body sees fit for that specific location.
Yeah, so, 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 in that, section 9311D is the...
The new noise ordinance.
New noise ordinance, so it's follow that...
And we could give a copy of the noise ordinance to each establishment when they sign the ordinance, if the board passes one.
So, what's interesting here is that references midnight, and we just heard with this establishment that they run until...
Well, this is for, yeah, well, this is for, for noise, for outside noise.
Yeah, so, and you guys cut your outside noise at, like, 10, right?
Two hours prior to closing.
Or 11:00?
11 or midnight or...
Yeah, okay, so... So, there's that, no more than three ordinance violations in a 12-month period, and confirmed warrant for the fire and building codes.
Sure.
Okay.
And then, the three violations would be an ongoing running thing, not just, not January to December, and then start over again.
I would say that, yeah.
It's any 12 consecutive months.
Usually, three in 12, in any 12-month period.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
The clock starts when you get the first one.
Yeah, I like that.
How are we going to measure the sound levels if we don't do it with a decibel meter?
There...
Or why was that taken out?
The, from what I understand, the big reason is, is they don't want to require there to be the decibel meter and have the official reading as part of the police report whenever one of these is created. They can't, if we put that in there, they can't actually issue it without a decibel meter, even if it's horribly loud, you know, with a decibel meter, you know, so...
I mean, that would pick up anything above...
Yeah, you know, and I think we only had one, you know, so, you know, which squad car has it, they have to do all the noise ordinance checks, you know, so...
I don't think we have that many restaurants going on at one time that multiple...
You'd be surprised. You'd be surprised, I was going to say, live down the streets.
Yeah, so, I believe the language now, Chief Wright, is, it's this, here, being able to hear anything.
Plainly audible.
Yeah, plainly audible from 50 feet. So, that, you know, that would be, the officer would, taking the complaint, would say, I was 50 feet away, I heard something, I swear that's true.
Yeah, as long as it's measurable, or, you know...
For what it's worth, we always try to work with the person that is getting the complaint lodged against them, right?
Yeah.
And hopefully, and frankly, in 99% of the instances, that's enough, right?
Yeah. So, are there more discussion we'd like on this, or is there, are these restrictions as we put together in, in August, are these, yeah, not restrictions, what's the proper term?
Conditions.
Conditions that we put together?
I think we covered it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Okay, so, it's 10:30 Monday to Friday, and 11 o'clock on weekends for outside?
I'd have to pull up the ordinance, I don't have it fresh in front of me, I can do that right now.
It's, let's see.
No, I guess I'm going off of our, our, what, what we, well, yeah, I guess the ordinance would supersede whatever we...
10:30 PM to 7:00, Sunday through Thursday, and midnight and 7:00 AM Friday and Saturday.
That doesn't mean you can't still have live music inside, it just means it can't be audible outside.
Exactly. This is just a noise ordinance.
Limitations inside would be currently just their hours of operation?
Yes.
And for the record, this is ordinance number 23-36, if anyone wants to review it, it's on our website.
So, we would have to, and we, now, if we have people outside, of course, they have, there's no way that they could have, well, I mean, they could have silent music.
Headphones.
Yes. There you go. That's, I've, I've seen such a thing. Okay, so, then, I'd entertain a motion to, a motion to resolve this, to...
Did you want to do findings of facts first?
Well, we could do the findings of facts first, that, that might help. So, has everyone had a chance to read the findings of facts? Okay, is there, so, I would entertain a motion to approve the findings of facts as is.
Well, don't you want to add the three bullet points that...
Well, the findings of facts don't have the...
Oh, right, right, sorry.
That, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the findings of fact special use for three eleven Barrington Avenue, DC Cobb's pin zero-three dash two-three dash three oh four dash zero-one-six as presented to us on November second, twenty twenty-three regarding live entertainment.
A second.
Brunner?
Yes.
Riz, Rohrher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then now we can, um, craft a special use. Um, and, uh, would you like to make that motion with the, um?
Sure, uh, I will, I will make a motion that we will approve, uh, well,
Recommend.
Will recommend to the Village Board that they approve a special use for three eleven Barrington Avenue, DC Cobb's pin zero-three-two-three-three oh four dash zero-one-six, uh, to allow for live entertainment, providing they follow the outdoor limitations as set forth in the, uh, the Village Code and, um, they.
Can you show them that they can say the, the additional conditions?
Oh, sure, with, you can say with conditions as, uh, uh, announced by staff.
Along with the conditions as announced by staff, and that would include compliance with all the building codes?
Yes.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, Brunner?
Yes.
Riz, Rohrher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
And Scarpelli?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Fantastic, so we're all done?
This will, uh, go to the, uh, Village Board meeting, um, we'll be in touch which one it'll be at, so, we'll be.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks. Chair Brunner, um, the applicant from three-two-five Meyer, uh, asks to proceed without, if the PZHC desires.
Okay, sounds good. So, then, moving on to our next item of business, uh, it will be, uh, the, another special use hearing. So may I have a motion to open the public hearing for, uh, request for special use to allow for a tavern with live entertainment as described in section one-five-zero, and one-five-seven, zero-five-zero, F-one-D-two, the zoning ordinance located at three-one-four River Street, East Dundee, Illinois six zero one-one-eight, in the V-one Downtown Business District?
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, Brunner?
Yes.
Riz, Rohrher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Okay.
I swear in?
Yeah, and then I'll ask him to.
Okay, uh, if you, if you, uh, don't mind approaching the podium and raising your right hand, stating your name, please.
Joe Zeller.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Fantastic, so, before he, uh, he makes his presentation, did you get any calls or emails in regards to this property?
No.
Fantastic, so.
Oh, um, question is, staff is sworn in for the entire evening or do they have to go into each public hearing?
No, I will admonish staff that you will remain under oath.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, uh, we wanna do live music once a month on Thursday evenings, and typically we're done by ten thirty PM. That's really all we've got for you.
And that's gonna be inside?
It's inside.
Okay. And, um, and at your place, you have, uh, where in your property is this gonna be?
It is on the second level and it's, uh, right, uh, in the front of the building, I guess, but second level.
So at the balcony?
Yes.
And would you, might be facing it in to the, then?
It's facing towards the fourth street.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, and you've never had music there before?
We've had it maybe three times now.
Okay.
Yeah, and it might expand more than once a month, but right now it's just every Thursday, or one Thursday a month is what we've been doing. And typically done by ten thirty.
Have we had any occupancy issues there, no? Any noise violations?
None I'm aware of.
Yeah, okay. Um, any questions for?
No.
Yeah?
I'm trying to think of some. Do you have DJs too, or is it just live?
No, just live music.
Yeah, what you're thinking is like, gonna be like a single person or?
Yeah, it's usually, um, uh, we do have a quartet, was in there once, then once was a guy with a guitar, so it's, it's not real headbanging music.
And Joe Curley, you, you have no veranda or, or rooftop?
No.
Okay, so, so right now it's all gonna be contained within the four walls of the business?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay?
Yes.
Any additional questions for Joe? If he has to say something, he has to be sworn in.
Can you whisper to me?
So is there, uh, any other questions?
No.
No, because, I, I mean, I've been there before, so.
It's kind of a quiet, quiet place, yeah.
Um, there's not, when there's live music, people are just really drinking, they're not gonna, you're not gonna have to move the table set out, there's no dancing.
No.
Okay. Because then it would change your occupancy, so. Okay, that was my question.
Ben, well. I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing, uh, regarding three-one-four, three-fourteen North River Street.
A second.
Brunner?
Yes.
Riz, Rohrher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, yeah, let's just go right into it.
Yeah, uh, I, I will make a motion that we approve the finding of facts as presented for three-fourteen North River Street, the distance social, pin zero-three dash two-three dash three-ten dash zero-one-five, uh, dated this November second, twenty twenty-three, as presented.
A second.
Brunner?
Yes.
Riz, Rohrher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think we could probably jump right into the motion for approving the special use. Um, so if we could have a motion, is there a way that we could simplify the, the making of this motion?
Um, with the. I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Village Board approving the special use for three-fourteen North River Street, the distance social, pin zero-three dash two-three dash three-ten dash zero-one-five, uh, with the three items that staff read earlier in today's meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Brunner?
Yes.
Riz, Rohrher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Fantastic, thanks, guys. So, done with that?
Done with that one.
Okay, so then on to our final, uh, agenda item of the, of the evening?
No.
Yeah, they, they won't be able to make it.
Oh, they won't, oh, okay.
Yes.
The applicant said, uh, the PZHC may proceed without.
Oh, proceed without, okay, okay, yes, I see. So, okay, so on to our second to last, then, item of the night. So, uh, may I have a motion to open, uh, the public hearing for a special request, for a request for a special use to allow for a restaurant with live entertainment as described in section one-five-seven, zero-five-zero, F-one-D-two of the zoning ordinance located at five oh one to five oh three Dundee Avenue, East Dundee, Illinois six zero one-one-eight, in the B-three Service Business District?
Motion to open, anyone?
Motion to open.
Yeah.
Second?
I'll second.
Brunner?
Yes.
Riz, Rohrher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Anyone wishing to be heard tonight, um, I swear you in, so we have the applicant and then if there's someone else here, okay. If you don't mind both raising your right hands and stating your names.
Sonia Coranza.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
This is one of the best, too.
We're co-partners.
Oh, okay, you state your name, please, for the record?
Alma Coranza.
Alma Coranza, okay.
Okay, so we are seeking, obviously, um, our permits to, and like she said, we have adjacent buildings. And, um, I think the main issues that we're having with our neighbors at this point is the fact that, um, we were really small, we were one building, we expanded onto five zero five for, um, dining and obviously entertainment. And when we re-signed our lease with, um, I think it's S and D Properties, um, they said that we were allowed to have entertainment since we had live bands before, just like the tavern is trying to do it. So the thing now is that the noise, we have a thing with the noise, you know, it's just like, oh, it's too loud. There's been plenty of times where your employees have come over and we've, if we're, I'm there, I'm usually always there, lowered everything down to the music. But the thing is that, um, in our lease, the reason we stayed where we're at, and the reason we signed a ten-year lease to stay at the restaurant, it's because we were allowed entertainment. That honestly makes up for like sixty to forty-five, sixty percent of the sales that we do. Because at this point, all we do is food, and that has drastically dropped down our sales. So since we've opened, we haven't even been able to exploit our potential. We opened up with a capacity of a hundred and forty sitting, and we haven't been able to do that. Just because what we're targeting, what we do for business, especially within the Hispanic community, it calls for some sort of entertainment. And during the rest of the week, we're not even busy, ours, like, busy pick time starts from Friday night till Sunday. So it's only really three days, they make up a week's worth of sales that we're not even able to get. And I mean, I see, like, the frustration here, but it's also very frustrating for us, because that's why we stayed, you know, that's why we paid over eighty thousand dollars for an expansion, that we were hoping to get an investment back, and we haven't been able to. And so, I mean, a lot of it has to do with maybe management, they should have, no, you know, we have a lease and it's explicitly said in the lease that we were going to have entertainment, and they agreed, and we signed the lease, and so now we're having neighborly issues, like, that's, to me, it's, it's frustrating, really, for us, because we're losing money that we spend on renovations, money that we spend on everything else, and now we're stuck with a ten-year lease. So, that's why we wanted to proceed with live entertainment.
Okay.
So your landlord gave you permission to open up with live entertainment with no boundaries?
Um, whatsoever, and the thing was that when we were.
So you don't have a clause in your lease called quiet enjoyment?
No, there's no such a thing. I mean, yes, I understand that something has to be there, but we made it, um, clear when we signed up a ten-year lease, it's, it's not just five years, it's not just four years, it's a ten-year lease, that we were hoping to get some sort of live entertainment. I mean, it hasn't have to be like a full-on band, but we, something to entertain the customers from the weekend. And they're like, it shouldn't be a problem, you know? So at that point in time, I'm, when we're making it clear and they're reviewing everything that we're doing, I think it should have been brought up, hey, you were not able to do, and it was not brought up.
I think that's not really in our.
No, no, it's not, it's, it's not in our privy, but, yeah, I would certainly, I mean, you gotta comply with laws. And if the laws say that, that everybody should be able to, all their noise should be contained within their space, then it should be contained within their space.
Exactly.
So what are the hours that you have the music playing, or is it live music, you said, or is it just like a DJ?
No, we, we, we don't even, we don't even have a DJ, it's just somebody.
There's speakers?
No, with, with a guitar, just two guitars. And I believe, what's that, um, saxophone, not a saxophone. But just, what we had is right now, we, we actually got two violations when we reopened, uh, one under my name, one under Alma's name. Um, because she was, I was manager under either in that time, then she was manager under either in that time. And we, it, it was just literally a something, a small speaker, you know, and I can see where they hear the noise, but this is something within the building, and like you said, it has nothing to do with us at this point, because it's, um, the owners, you know? There is absolutely, probably at this point for them to hear everything apparently that we do on the other side, there's nothing on the walls in between, and how is that like, at this point, our issue, you know?
Yeah, so how would this, um, be treated under our noise ordinance? How would you guys handle this, and have you gone out there for, for noise violations?
So, since twenty twenty-one, we've been there six times, the last one being October twenty-ninth of this year.
So like, yeah, three days ago.
Recently, yeah. A, and again, we would go out there, ask them to turn it down, and generally are compliant.
So, and you're saying it's like two guitars, but I mean, you're amplified.
Yeah, and I mean, I think the last time you, you guys probably were there, it was not even live music. We did not, we haven't had live music since we got our violation.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
But it, it doesn't matter if it's live or not live.
No, for a noise violation, yeah. Yeah, it's, I mean, for this, this, um, what we believe, I mean, the, the thought process around having live music separate from just a stereo.
The noise, the ordinance.
Yeah, live music is normally played louder for whatever reason. But, so it's more likely that you'll have noise violations, but, yeah, clearly you can have noise violations just by turning up your stereo, I mean, or all sorts of things. So, yeah, so, and this is, you said since twenty twenty-one, there's been six, and, and, and recently. Okay, um, do we have other questions for the petitioner right now?
I mean, what makes it tough, um, is that, you know, there's clearly, it sounds like the issue is really with the construction of the building. It's nothing that falls for us, because at this point, we're talking about, like, insulation between the tendons, so I feel like it's a little hard, and maybe, right, I'm an architect, so maybe where the structure's at, there's no insulation, sound bad, or something, and it's carrying through to the tendon space, but I.
Yeah, and, and I would say, yeah, the problem's more than like, what we're talking about really tonight, which, I mean, it intersects what you're talking about, because it's noise and whatnot, but regardless of us doing this, you know, you still have to not, you shouldn't be violating the noise ordinance, you know? And if, if the building doesn't permit you to violate, you know, if you can't be there and not violate the noise ordinance, then that's, uh, you know.
Where is exactly, within your square footage, are the, the musicians playing? Is it near their wall?
No, um, since, like, like I said, since we reopened, which we reopened October sixteenth of last year, um, post our construction, we've had two la, two bands play live, and they've been completely like on the other end, you know, the, the whole point is.
By the side space where you did that outdoor event?
Yes, but by the side space, but then we tried, second time, we tried to contain them in the middle to avoid the sound waves to like directly hit them. And it seems like nothing has worked, but then, our biggest, like, to me, the biggest thing in for Alma is the fact that, you know, before we expanded, we had live bands, and we never had this sort of issue. The issue back then was that we did not have space to, you know, have more customers or to even have a social gathering, you know, it was just something so small.
There was a blank space, there, there, there was twelve hundred square feet between you and them, and that.
No, they were in the middle and they expanded to the outside.
This is, I have a, I don't think they see that, so this is where they originally were, they just occupied this other side now?
We went to the opposite side.
Five oh three, five oh five.
Yeah, with the trucks in the, in the way, I don't think they see it.
Yeah.
So, so when you were right next door with the other space empty, there was no noise issue, but now you've expanded into there, and now there's a noise issue? That doesn't make sense.
I wonder if it has somebody doing it?
Yeah, Chris.
I feel like there's science involved.
Yeah, science involved.
The, the original restaurant had a suspended acoustical ceiling, and that was removed to have the exposed metal decking.
Oh, okay.
That could be part of the problem, it's not absorbing any of the sound.
Okay, and transferring.
A little bit easier through everything.
Yeah.
So there's no, you know, that's, that may be the reason.
Yeah.
And, and Chris, are those walls currently just metal stud with drywall, five-inch drywall on each side, probably?
It's, yeah, it, it's five-inch drywall on each side, I don't know that there's any insulation in there or not.
Right. And, and they're, they're both assembly uses?
Yes.
Okay, well, because then you can have a one-hour wall, if it's an assembly in a retailer, you're supposed to have a two-hour wall. Yeah, okay. Okay.
That, that would do it, the acoustical ceiling panel, definitely, will transfer the noise over, so.
And they'll sound bad possibly?
Yeah, that, that would build a, build a, a new wall inside of your wall with sound-dating material in it from the floor to the ceiling.
So I mean, we can definitely do, would, at this point, you know, it's just easier and, um, more convenient to do the noise cancelling for us, but I mean, with, I don't know if that would work. It's just a matter of, we are trying and putting everything to make the place work, and I mean, like I said, we had, we have a ten-year lease, so it's kinda hard for us to, um,
Yeah.
get out of that at this point, because we've looked into it, it's almost a year, it's been a year since we reopened, and we haven't had, like I said, um, uh, what we expected.
Yes.
So.
Would you be open to something like that?
Yes, we'll be open.
Yeah, so something you could add as a condition? You know?
Which is?
Sound dampening? Some sound control for the building due to its specific structure?
Yeah, usually for something like that, you stagger the studs, and then the outlets can't be, you know, next to each other, at, at opposite tendons, they have to be staggered as well.
Okay.
So, the architect should know, you're architect. The tenant's architect.
I guess, is, is that our privy though? I, I mean, if we just, they have to comply with the, with the, with the noise ordinance, then it's between them, the building owner, and.
And are the complaints coming from live music? It sounds like they haven't had live music very often, so is that even within?
Just noise.
Yeah, it's just noise, it's not specific to this permit?
Yeah. Okay, so, um, would we like, do we have any other questions for the?
I think there was, uh, two other people sworn in, I don't know if they wish to talk.
Um, like, we are sisters, we're partners, I'm not sure if she would like to add anything else.
Nope.
I think everything she said, it's, it's, uh, we're both on the same page.
Yeah.
And she stated, my biggest concern is, we've been in business for over, I wanna say over five years, over five years? About five years.
So we never had an issue. We were pretty tiny. And to be honest with you guys, when we probably realized that in the past, but it was loud and it was such a small space. So like she said, we expected to be able to-
Get our return on investment back and we haven't been-
And then now the place is solid and now it's beginning to issue, so we don't know where this is coming from. It's kind of confusing.
Yeah.
More than anything frustrating.
Yeah, 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 I can imagine.
And it's affecting us the, um, or both of us, like a lot, like, like she explained on the numbers. So coming from having this tiny place that we are able to do numbers, now we unable to.
So we have the capacity, but we can exploit the capacity.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, um, like she explained to myself, you know, like, we go out, we make sure we work, like, I just, by hearing you guys, I understand that, like, make sure the noise was not overpass these or there. And it's a lot of times that it doesn't pass that. A lot of times I'll send one of the employees, I'll call my friend, hey, just make sure to keep, keep everything off, to make sure the noise is here or there too. Cause I understand that it's bothering them, so like just make sure to keep it peaceful for everybody.
What time does your bands begin playing?
They usually start between, what, four, four to eight. We don't even have them late, because we try to hit a peak dinner, uh, peak hour dinner for dinnertime. So we don't have like overnight music as, you know, late nights and DJs. It's just dinnertime.
And how many times per week?
We would only be able to have it maybe Friday or Saturday or at least one day during the week.
Okay, so Friday and Saturday and then every weekend?
Would, would love to, you know, that's why it's like that we are open for um-
Yeah, I think the situation right now is they're only having it, well, you've only had it like twice right in the last, so.
And the last year.
Yeah, and they're, they're looking at this more as a weighted increase.
Increase. Barb, if I can ask you a question, what are your peak times for your customers and dates?
We're all at nine to one in the morning.
Nine AM to one, yeah.
Gambling that they're in and out. A beautiful place they have. I get it. It's, when you're outside, you hear nothing. When you're inside, I can hear the dishes, it's the walls. Uh, we're on, we're on a long lease too.
Well, that sounds like a civil matter between your, your landlord.
We're on a lease too, no one told us.
Yeah.
We didn't resign, but here, here's things, not just the office, it's the jukebox. It's the jukebox that exactly works.
Okay, so that, that I'm gonna, again, say, I think that's gonna be a civil matter, that you're gonna have to talk to your management company. With respects to this public hearing and this special use that they're asking is for live entertainment, um, we're trying to find a balance between the two, but in the meantime, I'm gonna ask both you guys also work with your landlord to kind of create a way that's more agreeable and everybody, you don't hear dishes, you don't hear the jukebox, people talking. That's different than, that's, I know, me and you have talked for the last year. It's different than live entertainment. Live entertainment, they've only had it a couple times, so it's hard to really judge what-
All the time.
Yeah. Well, we've only had a couple complaints then.
We have cameras, if any of you guys would like to take care of, to look at that, we're more than happy to-
Well, no, we don't, we don't, we're not to go there that far.
My sister is right, we only have it two times. And actually, we did have our two violations.
Sure. Okay.
And what I'm finding, and I don't know.
I, I wouldn't know.
But go ahead.
I wouldn't.
I just want to end time, please.
The point, we, we don't know. They're leaving the jukebox on overnight. One day, the jukebox was so loud that when their customer came in, it was quiet. But I had to deal, I didn't call the police because it was just me. I, I can deal with some music. But when the customer comes in and says, nope, I'm out, that's where it's getting the, the sucks. The sound ending will probably not even work. That's how thin these walls are.
Well, we have a couple architects on the board and engineers who are-
I'm not gonna work with my landlord, because my lease says for five years.
Yeah.
They never told us if we give them permission to have live music, I wouldn't have resigned the lease.
Well, that's again, outside the scope of this.
I can't go over there and tell them, can you turn it down?
Sure.
I have to call the police. Again, it's unnecessary drama for me to call the police. Um, or my employees, brand new employee last Friday, didn't know what to do. It's like, I can't work at this place. Should've just called the police, but we don't have, it's not a policy, call the police every time.
Okay.
And that's where it's getting frustrated on both, because I would love to work with this desk. I would, I told them all the time, I want to do bands outside, because it is great for their business, but it's not great for our business. So I, I'm like them, I'm frustrated too. I don't know what to do.
Okay.
For what it's worth, we don't mind the calls. We don't see it as unnecessary drama. It's what we do.
Right, but I, I understand.
Well, for us, it makes the situation even worse, because it's just tension building up between both of us and I think that's, that's where it gets aggravating.
Right.
I don't wanna-
It's arrest, being called.
Yeah, I don't wanna, you know-
I don't want to go into work being on it.
Yeah, I don't want to volunteer work for the police department, but I think if we get to that level, um, I'm open to having a sit down meeting with your landlords, both of your tenants and the police department, where you can kind of figure out something outside of the scope of this live entertainment, just to squash whatever is going on right now, just a side note. I'm willing to have that meeting with you guys, okay?
I'd love our landlords to get them soundproofing.
Sure, well, we'll, we'll talk about, we could talk about that at a later time.
I mean, from the way this sounds, I'd even be concerned if you hit your capacity and just had a, a noisy dining room, it would be too loud.
Right.
Just people talking.
Right.
You know, if you put like two hundred people in there.
And that's outside the scope of live entertainment that we're trying to discuss tonight.
But the live entertainment and the jukebox, it's, it's loud.
The jukebox, we have actually a limit for, since we've got our two violations, we can say we have a procedure, we have a policy where all the employees know that they cannot go past the limit. So, um, and we're there eighty percent of the time. So only two days and another Tuesday and Monday.
And who was there Monday?
Another Tuesday and Monday, but it's just, we don't have no one, um, even ourselves. It's just like, we make such a low sales.
We want sales and our sales are doing stuff.
Completely understand, but we don't have even customers, so it does not make sense that they would have the jukebox all the way out. It's my problem.
They did, they did not, but now it's gonna follow the one night. What is going on?
All right, I think we have enough to close the hearing.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah. All right, um, we'll, we'll continue by closing the hearing and then we'll discuss the special use after that, if you guys want to have a seat, I appreciate it.
So could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close, that's okay.
I second you.
Brunner?
Yes.
Reiz Braher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Great. So, I'm sorry. So, uh, would we like to have a discussion before we move to the findings of fact?
Uh, for this?
Yeah.
I would just think that, I mean, both properties are probably about as big as this room. I mean, if we had somebody playing the guitar in the corner, everybody in this room could hear it. I mean, it doesn't have to be going through the walls at a volume that it would disturb the neighbors. So I would think that the meeting that you plan in the future, you know, everybody could come to an agreement with the volume level and-
Yeah.
To be respectful of neighbors.
For the record, I want to repeat the definition of live entertainment. Shall consist of live music, dancing and or singing performances, floor shows, DJ shows and other amplified entertainment performances, whether or not an admission fee is charged. Live entertainment shall not include subtle ambient or incidental background music provided for guests or patrons by musicians such as unamplified piano player, harpist, strolling violinist, traditional jukebox, karaoke or guitarist. However, if there's an admission to charge requirement to observe or attend such ambient background music, then it shall be considered live entertainment. So it sounds like a jukebox and a guitarist that's unamplified, like an acoustic, is not live entertainment. Do you know if, if you're gonna be amplifying your bat, your music or anything like that? Okay.
So I see this is, there's two separate issues here. There's, there's an issue that is, as Franco said, it's a civil issue and it's a, it's an issue that the two, uh, the, or the business before us and their neighbor need to take up with their landlord. And we really shouldn't be getting involved in that. I, if the city wants to get involved, that, that's a, the village wants to get involved from an administrative standpoint, that's fine, but it's really something they need to work out with their landlord. And if the landlord told the folks applying for the permit today that they could run this type of business with no problem, they may have an out of their lease. But anyways, um, that's for them. It sounds like just shuffling plates in the store make noise on the other side. Therefore, I don't see any, anything injurious in us granting them the live entertainment special use because there's a, there's a problem with just regular business operation. So, um, but I would want to make the special use uh, have all the same conditions that we've put on everyone else. And therefore, for, for you, the, the neighbor, uh, anytime something's too loud, you have to kind of take the police. Until, until all you sit down with your landlord and figure out how, how they're gonna soundproof either your space or their space.
So, and I would, I would add that with the special use, and if you do contact the police and you hit, if we have the conditions that we put in there, it would get escalated to the village board after three in a twelve month period, where then this special use could get revoked.
But if, but if the special use gets revoked, it's just gonna revoke the live entertainment.
Yeah.
And they're still gonna be, they're still gonna have the problem that exists, so.
Yeah, still going. Yeah, yeah. Now, I think it's very important to say, yes, it needs to follow the laws.
Right.
I think that, you know, that's all that we're in the business of.
Yeah, that's all we can enforce.
I think the only way, just as a thought exercise, we could say it would be perhaps injurious if there was a specific property for whatever reason. It would have to be that, 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 that the land could cause a problem. I can't even think of it really.
Franco, does, does Eman own their property as well as the center behind it?
No, it's a different company.
Different owner, okay. I was gonna say the one should occupy the whole place and if you could move your business to another location in that shopping center.
We were trying to go across the street, but yes, uh, kitchen, you have a grease trap.
Yep.
Okay, so then I would entertain a motion to approve the findings of fact as presented by staff.
So move. Motion, we approve the findings of fact.
Second.
Brunner?
Yes.
Reiz Braher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
And then, um, a motion, can I have a, well, you, you've been so good at saying.
I, I will make a motion that we, uh, make a recommendation to the village board to approve a special use for live entertainment at five oh one dash five oh three Dundee Avenue. Lammeriscurra, uh, partial pin number zero three dash two three dash four seven nine dash zero zero seven, November second, twenty twenty three. Uh, following all of the additional conditions as set forth by staff here at tonight's meeting and following all of the other village existing codes and ordinances.
I second it.
Brunner?
Yes.
Reiz Braher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll be in contact when it goes to the village board for final approval. And then, um, we'll go, and then after that, we'll discuss any type of potential, um, meetings that you could have with us if, if you don't work it out with your landlord to begin with. Okay. So in the intro, I recommend you guys each talk to your landlord.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on then to the final, uh, issue of our new business of the, of tonight, which is the uh, a request for a special use, a public hearing for a request for a special use to allow for a restaurant with live entertainment as described in section one five seven zero five zero F, one D two of the zoning ordinance located at three two five Meyer Avenue, East Dundee, Illinois, six zero one one eight in the B one downtown business district.
There's no one there from the-
There's no one here.
Do we need a public hearing?
Uh, yeah, we could still do, we're just in case.
Yes.
So may I have a-
Second?
Second?
Second.
Did we get a motion actually?
Oh, I thought Frank. Frank, did you make a motion? Sorry.
Sure, I'll motion for the public.
He's a motioner.
All right. Brunner?
Yes.
Reiz Braher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Okay, did we get any letters or emails or phone calls in regards to this property damages?
Uh, one person called asking what it is and I explained it to her and then I didn't hear anything back.
Yeah, do we have her name?
No, no.
Okay. So, okay, uh, we do not have the petitioner tonight, but we will, I think, ask the same questions. Yes, Diamond Jims. So have we had any issues with occupancy on their property? Okay, and noise complaints?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. I think in general, they do, I mean, outdoor music?
Yeah.
On their patio. Um, I know they've had issues in the past years ago, um, but I know they made changes. And so it's good to hear that you don't have any on record, so fantastic.
It seems like they're in complaints with the turning down the music and, you know, Sundays and like Friday, Saturday and Sunday and Sundays on summer, but now, nothing.
Yep. Okay.
Steph doesn't have any complaints?
Right.
Okay, great. Uh, well, then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
I'll second.
Okay.
Brunner?
Yes.
Reiz Braher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the findings of fact as presented.
I'll second.
Oh, for three twenty five Meyer Street?
Brunner?
Yes.
Reiz Braher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Someone want to take over from Frank for the approval of the special use?
Hold on.
He's done a great job.
He's done a great job.
Okay. We could keep that momentum going.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we make a recommendation to the village board to approve a special use for live entertainment for three twenty five Meyer Avenue, Diamond Jims, pin zero three dash two three dash three oh eight dash zero zero two, November second, twenty twenty three as presented. Uh, pertaining to the additional conditions as set forth here tonight by, uh, staff and that they follow all the existing and future village codes and ordinances.
Second it.
Brunner?
Yes.
Reiz Braher?
Yes.
Feck?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, that concludes our new business, uh, for the evening, so we'll move on to our other business, which is to have a discussion on the Riverfront master plan. So Franco, did you have anything you wanted to present on this specifically?
Um, nothing that was above and beyond the scope of the memo and, uh-
Okay. Okay, um, yeah, we don't have anyone else here, I think, who would want to discuss.
Did, did anyone here go to the open house session?
I couldn't make it either. What'd you guys think about, aren't they blocking off the road or something?
Yeah.
Which ones?
So while they're going to reroute and I have to like, because this is right by where I live. And I think it's a great idea.
You do?
Yes.
Some people were saying the opposite.
I mean, I live right there. I mean, I could see some of the business owners potentially, it's going to negatively affect the cruising on Water Street. There's a lot of motorcycles and cars that go on Water Street.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but what it's gonna do is have the roads come down to, and I don't know the exact name of the road at Bartles Park.
Water, Water Street.
Water Street.
Well, Water Street's along the river.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and then you've got Second Street that goes in and comes around the park.
So Second.
That's my street, that's my street.
Yeah, so Second Street is going to, so instead of having Water Street go, you know, along Bartles Park between, um, Second and Barrington, it's gonna go, you know, they're gonna route the traffic up Second Street and then back down Barrington and then back to Water Street. So what it's going to allow is for a park, that Bartles Park will be able to go right to the river.
Also, there's no, um, road there to, so people, danger.
Yes, so get rid of that and then we can have even like grating of the ground down to the river. You know, it won't be, they can actually change, you know, change the way that does.
I, I think it may actually force more people through the downtown, so it may be good for the businesses because people, say you were up on, on the west side of Carpentersville, up by Menards, and you came down Huntley. I call it Huntley Blacktop.
It is Huntley Blacktop.
You go down the hill, you cross the river, you turn, you make a right and go along the river, which is Washington Street. Carpentersville turns into water and you get, you get to the stop sign there, it's gonna force you to go left. Whereas if you went- it's going to force you to go left, whereas if you went, if you went straight, it was, oh, probably twelve, fifteen years ago that we stopped allowing people to turn left at seventy-two.
Thank God.
Because you, but there are still, I still see, I still see one or two people every day making a left-hand turn, and I've seen semis make a left-hand turn out of there. So this, I, I think this will force the people down Barrington, and they'll come up to either River or, or Meyer or one of the other streets.
So that road would be North Street, right?
No, Barrington.
No, I mean, would they cut through?
No, they'll come all the way to Barrington.
I, I think they'll come all the way to the stop sign at Barrington, and they'll drive along the park.
Okay.
And they'll, they'll pass Second, and then they'll, they'll come to the stop sign right here by the village, and they'll go up to River, and they may turn down River, or they may go up to Van Buren and turn down Van Buren to get, if, if they're heading that way, because right now, it, it should cut down some of the traffic that's on, on Jackson. Because right now, people that come up that way, uh, now, going the opposite direction, like when I, and then West Dundee, and I, I go to go home, I make a left at Water Street. I, I don't, I don't go and wait for the arrow at, at.
I don't either.
But, but then when I, and I live up on Summit, so when I start heading northbound on Water,
Yeah.
I usually take a right at Jackson and go to River and turn left on River, but sometimes I go, I never go all the way to Barrington, I go to Second Street and cut around the park and go to Barrington.
Yeah, so do I, or sometimes I stop at the stop sign you, where you're ducking and they've cut it off.
So there, there are a bunch of things, there's this, and I, I'll just share since, um,
Okay.
Uh, you know, I, I go to a lot of meetings, so I, I know, like, some things that are going on. So one, the village is talking about establishing a truck route that will have a designated truck route. Apparently, that's very much like zoning, you know, if you don't have, if you don't allow
Which we need.
a business somewhere to be anywhere, if you don't have a truck route, they can go everywhere. But we're going to establish it, and it's going to reinforce, I think, some of these traffic patterns that we want. And they might even make Van Buren better, um, as, you know, the village bought the two houses on the corner of Van Buren and seventy-two.
Nice.
Um, and those, there's talk of using some of that property to make that intersection, you know, better. You know, as opposed to having that giant, you know, retaining wall where you can't really turn right there, and it's dangerous for pedestrians.
All those two, yeah, what do you want to happen, those two houses?
So the village has bought those.
Yeah, they've sold those. It's like corner houses and seventy-two.
It's like a danger zone right there.
Yeah, and they were in bad shape.
Yeah, nobody wanted, yeah.
And there's a right of first refusal to buy the business next to it also.
I know, it is.
Oh, they bought those too.
Yeah. And what did he play? So, so like, all these things together, right, you know, so like routing people through to, to Van Buren, not requiring everyone to go on Water, on River Street, which is challenging, you know, with Dairy Queen and all that, you know?
Yeah, and then there's also, I, I know that, uh, because I sit on the park board here, that Erica and some of the staff met with, uh, the executive director of the park district, and we, the park district is going to co-applicant a OSLAD grant. Uh, every time you sell a house or a property, there's a transfer tax, well, that transfer tax goes into a fund, and the, uh, state of Illinois, uh, the DNR, they, they issue a grant application, and when a grant application has two applicants on it, it's looked at much more favorably. So the, uh, the village is going to apply for an OSLAD grant to help develop that park area and that.
Yes.
And there's probably a very good, are you guys partnering with Hitchcock, right?
Yes.
Uh, Hitchcock has had extremely good luck, I mean, we've, I know at the park district, we have used Hitchcock, and we got, there's a brand-new zoo building going up at Randall Oaks Park, and then, uh, we've got a park that just opened up in Hickory Hills Park off of Long Meadow Parkway, and we've got a park that's going to open up in West Dundee over by Bonkowski and thirty-one. All of those were done with OSLAD grants.
Yeah, I think, I was talking to someone at Hitchcock about this OSLAD stuff, is that the one that is also tied to, like, the improvements you put on the park?
Yeah.
Where, like, you have to have, like, activities?
Yeah, you have to, you, in your application, you have to show not only the acquisition of land or that, but you have to, you have to show what type of amenities you're going to add, and then those all get graded, and then at, uh, I don't know if they're going to make this cycle, but typically at the IAPD Illinois Association of Park District's annual conference, which is the last weekend in January, they announce the winners of the OSLAD grants.
Yeah, so, yeah, I was talking with one of the, you know, the people from Hitchcock there, she went right into this, and you could see the way our specific designs are done is to make them attractive for those grants. There's like, they have these amenities and they want like five, it's like a really good number to have for getting a grant, so like, you go, why are there, why is there this like little swing over the river and all these, it's all these little things kind of count. She's even said, like, setting up like a bags area would count as an activity, you know? But, yeah.
And this gets piggybacked on the transfer tax when people sell property within the village, is that?
It was really when, whenever there's a, uh, that transfer tax is paid, even when you refinance a home and that, so, uh, it's, uh,
So is it in addition to, or it takes from?
It, it takes from that, so the, the money goes into this fund, and it's throughout, it's any sale within the entire state of Illinois, not just, not just the Village of East Dundee, so.
So it's not like an additional?
Last year, they had, uh, they had about thirty-nine million dollars in which to distribute in, uh, in grant funds.
So the other thing, interesting things, I think, to add about this is, one, it's going to go, the proposal goes and connects to what they did in Carpentersville, you know, with their riverwalk and that sidewalk, it goes up that far north, at least with some of the improvements.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it also is, they are considering what Carpentersville's doing with their developed, the land they bought, which is like, I don't even know what to describe it.
And, and the, the old Eminem patio stone.
Yeah, the stone, right, you know, right before, um, you know, the, the grist mill, right, right before that.
Oh, okay.
That just, it was like a park.
Yeah, before quill master, yeah.
So, um, it, uh, they're going to build a park there, which might have like a, you know, kayak launch or canoe launch thing, and so it, it's at least being discussed, and there's definitely some collaboration between, um, our trustees and some of the trustees in Carpentersville about making that a compatible, you know, consistent experience.
So when do they vote on this?
Well, it's, uh, I mean, maybe.
Just planning right now?
No, I mean, it's, it's, this is a proposal
Okay.
of things that we could give, right?
Okay.
You know, some of them require us buying, you know, people's houses and stuff, so.
Long range.
Yeah.
Okay, long range, okay, cool.
Yeah, what, what is really though important about it, and, and I was saying this to Steve before the meeting though, is if you ever look at number five on our findings of fact, you know, once a program or planned program is presented and made a public, made public, like in a hearing, like we did,
Yeah.
announced to do this thing that we, we went to last week, this is now something we can consider when hearing special uses and variances in this area. So if somebody wants to do something that we think would jeopardize or compromise this plan, we could say this is out of line, and it'd be a reason to deny something.
Okay.
So it's, 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 it's a good.
We're still, we're still going to discuss it.
Oh, yeah, we're still going to discuss it, but it's, 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 it's a tool, it's like, you know, we had the hearing a couple weeks ago on the, um, you know, wanting to do the, the car, the, the car lot. You know, we, we didn't have a lot to fall back on because our comprehensive plan is so old.
Yeah.
So this isn't a comprehensive plan yet, but it's, it's like that, it's like a baby one for this, that we can use as reference.
Oh, so real quick, it's, so the parking deck's going to be first, right, or the parking lot, whatever we choose to do, the trustees to choose to do, uh, I know they're going to buy, um, Rogers, Eddie and Barney's.
There's a lot of talk going on, yeah.
Well, he told me personally, but anyway, um, I don't know, I mean, did they decide parking lot or?
So that hasn't been.
Either one is so expensive.
Yeah, I mean, that is a, uh.
So that's going to be done before this, is what I'm saying.
One, I, I think it's, you could guess that.
I would say yes.
You know, the, the board gives the decide, I mean, we're having active meetings, they're having active meetings talking about our parking garage right now. This is a proposal, if you've been here long enough, we've done lots of these types of proposals in the past and done nothing on them.
Yeah, if, if they go for the OSLAD grant, I believe those grant, grant applications are due by like October first, so the, uh, this coming January, there, there's no application currently pending, so it would be a grant application for, that would be awarded in January of twenty twenty-five.
Oh, so we're waiting a while, okay.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it'd be, which one, there's like five independent, is it five? Like, there's several independent, like, groups here, so.
Oh, okay.
Like, maybe they do the one by Hager first, which I think, you know, there could be some desire to do that, and then, you know, maybe the, you know, it's going to be in phases even if they do them, they're not going to rip up the whole river, you know, and all be some D all at once.
Yeah, we'd have a riot.
Yeah, yeah, so, it's good, it's like, you know, a lot of these things, I think they take a while to achieve, um, so it's good to have a plan though, so we can move in that direction, that's, that's, that's the key.
Mm-hmm, that's cool.
Everyone to be on the same page.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, I think, is there anything else anyone wants to say on, on this? Because I mean, we need a motion or anything to discuss that, so. Um, okay, looking like no more, um, moving on to the next item in the agenda, historic commission items, we have nothing for the evening, um, so then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Um, did you guys miss the, the beginning of the, of the meeting, we had a public comment section?
Okay, I'll wait for the next.
Um, is it?
You guys all adjourned already.
We haven't made the motion.
Someone, I thought it was a motion.
Someone did motion, Kruger.
But we didn't vote.
Is there a second on the motion? No, all right, um, yeah, so you're not adjourned yet.
Okay.
You could approach a podium.
You could come up, yeah.
Why do you come, okay.
Yeah, 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 and say your name.
I, we're new to that, I was trying to know what he said.
Yeah, yeah.
I just was curious.
Could you say your name?
Yeah, Mike Beasley.
Mike Beasley.
Mike Beasley, B-E-A-S-L-Y.
Yeah, yeah.
So is it your name?